Uh, roll call, please.
Yeah, she's on her.
Okay. Margie Ferris, present. Carla?
Present.
Joe Bozzi?
Absence excuse.
Sherry?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
And Monica?
Here.
You? Approval or amendments to the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
I said it.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes, uh, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I approve the minutes.
Wasn't there, so you guys have to do it. You got a second, Sheri?
I have a second.
Alright, so approval or motion and a second, um, all in favor to approve?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section twenty-seven point zero five of ordinance number one twenty-six. There are five members on the ZBA, four of whom are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within thirty days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. Okay, so we're gonna open up new business, um, JZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero applicant at ninety seventy Stone Road. Please come up, state your name, and why you're here.
Uh, Richard Kraus. I live at ninety seventy Stone Road, and I also own four acres next to me, adjacent to my property. And, uh, the reason I'm requesting this variance is I wanna take my hundred and one feet lot and annex like fifty feet off of the four acres, and then that'll leave a hundred and fifty foot lot to my right, and then my lot will be one forty-nine point six at the road, which is five inches roughly short. So I'm asking for a variance to allow to split the realignment.
Six inches or less?
It's like five inches, yeah. It's point four feet. So it's one forty-nine point six, so it's point four feet short, so it's five, basically five inches short.
So you're just?
Gotcha.
Just short on one side.
Okay. Um, don't stay there for a second.
Okay.
Anyone wish to speak on this? Okay. Sir, just have a seat for inside, let him speak.
Okay.
Say your name, um, and address, please.
Mark Coletti, seventeen sixty-five. I'm gonna speak on all four of these tonight just because I got the time. In terms of this one, there's two things that I'm gonna look at the zoning board in terms of how they should handle things. One, is it a function of the property itself? In this case, yes, it is a function of the property itself. And the second thing I'm gonna look at in this is we for all our four issues is, is there a chance that if you do a variance, is everybody and their brother gonna want a variance after they do this? I don't see that the issue for this. When you write the variance for this, I would recommend that you sit there and say, the reason you wrote the variance, besides all your other infinite wisdom, is because you rounded up. That way, you don't have a bunch of issues where someone comes in and says, well, I'm a hundred and forty-four foot, or I'm a hundred, you know, they don't start nickeling, you, you set the dead bottom, write it a hundred and forty-nine and a half. That way, you can say you rounded up, and then you don't have to worry about a flood of other people coming in saying, we wanna do the same thing. You need to set a lower limit on this, otherwise it'll be like on the third agenda item where it just gets out of control and everyone wants a variance. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to speak? Alright, I'm gonna close public comment. Gary, do you wanna, I mean, it's just a one fifty?
Yeah.
I mean, six inches, I mean, it's?
Sure, it's, it's just a requirement of the IRS zoning requirement, uh, minimum one fifty. So, uh, yeah, this was brought to me by Bonnie, of course, uh, as he's requiring to split the property. So, yeah, it's just a technicality. It's less than the one fifty, so that's why he's here.
Okay. Thanks, Gary.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, as written here, for eighty point four feet. I don't see the need to really go back and forth on it when it makes sense.
He's adding to his parcel net.
And he owns both of them.
Yeah, he's just gonna split them off.
Yeah. Should I second it? Can I second it? I'll second that motion.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Um, let's do roll, roll call, please.
Okay. Margie Ferris, yes. Carla?
Yes.
Joe is not here. Sherry?
Yes.
Brian? Oh, I'm sorry, Monica?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes. There's a granite. Next time, we're gonna have to write-
Congratulations.
We'll have to write some other, uh, stipulation, or not stipulations, but go through the practical difficulty and stuff like that, okay? On the next one. Yeah. I mean, I just don't wanna go through, you know what I mean? I know, that's a problem we don't have to write. Okay, we're gonna move on. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're gonna, are you good?
Yeah, you keep going.
As written, as, as he wrote out in his practical difficulty, as, as, okay, yep. I have it right here. When she said as written, that's what I thought. Alright, JZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero zero, oh, sorry, zero one one applicant at Waupu Island? Not, sorry, Waupu Road on Russell Island, sorry, my bad. My bad. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Anthony Riggarello. My address is two-two-six-zero-one O'Connor, St. Clair Shores, Michigan, four-eight-zero-eight-zero. I'm here tonight, uh, on behalf of Russell Island. I am, uh, the president of our association, and we are here seeking a variance for, to place two containers on a landlocked lot that is in the middle of the island, that our foundation has agreed to allow us to put a trail in so we can have access to these containers. We're going to build them as per code, uh, to put a roof on it, uh, they will be sited, um, and we will, uh, it's gonna be wooded. The, the area right now is all wooded, and this area's always been used as a storage area. I did bring pictures, if you guys would care to see them.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to at least.
That we're, uh, planning on storing.
Thank you.
And I also do have, uh, four letters from the, uh, from the neighbors right around that, that would say butt up to this property, that all agree with this project.
How big will the buildings be?
The containers are forty foot long.
Oh, so they're like shipping containers?
Shipping containers, correct.
And those will stay?
Those are staying right there, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna, it's, we're gonna build them on a pad. The pad will be forty foot wide, fifty foot long. We're gonna have twelve inches of, uh, road mix in, in there to hold them down, and then we'll put the roof on over that.
Oh.
There was a drawing. Did they get the drawings with that?
Yeah, just-
Yeah, just to basically show how we were laying it out. I don't know if you guys had that?
We have it, yes, thank you.
We're seasonal architects.
I stay there for one second. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this?
Or a roof.
Case, I'm gonna open up the public comment. Have a seat for one second. These are letters that were written.
Can I see those pictures?
Hang on, yeah, the pictures, alright, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, same thing as before. This is obviously a landlocked situation. I will help you identify Russell Island and why it's critical that Russell Island, uh, gets this variance. I don't want people on Harson's Island saying, we gotta plant a lot, if Russell can do it, we can do it. So obviously, this is because of Russell Island. The other thing to note too is, because Russell Island's pretty small, you don't have to worry about this continuing on with everyone else wants to do the same thing. Again, those are the two things I'm looking out for, so I don't see a reason why you couldn't approve this variance unless one of the neighbors disapproves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
So this stuff is all going in there, and anybody can access this?
Alright, I have... Next time, try to get these in prior to the letters. Alright, we're gonna read these letters. Yeah, please.
Okay, to whom it may concern, my name is Nicole Peltier. I own the home and surrounding four lots of four-two-six South Russell Island, which sits directly in front of lot four-fourteen. RIPOA is currently looking to place storage containers to adequately store our island's equipment that we use to maintain our decommissioned county roads. I am a hundred percent in support of the storage units that I have been needed for a long time, and will be nice to finally have somewhere to store our equipment. Thank you, Nicole Peltier.
To whom it may concern, my name is Thomas M. Hannan. I'm the owner, I own the property one-two-eight Druid in Russell Island. This property is bordering the area where the RIPOA Board is initiating a building to keep necessary equipment. This build is for betterment of the island and for who all reside here. I absolutely, I, I absolutely have no negative issues concerning this build. Quite contrary, I'm happy to see the initiative of the RIPOA Board has exerted to protect the plant and equipment necessary to make Russell Island the gem that it is. Thank you very much for your concern and your time. Thomas M. Hannan. To whom it may concern, I am writing in regards to the variance request for lot four-one-four Russell Island, property ten-seventy-four dash fourteen dash nine-zero-one dash zero-one-eight-nine dash zero-zero-zero. We are in favor of this variance being granted. It will serve a great benefit to the entire island population. We respectfully request that this variance be granted. Sincerely, Lisa M. Cordell, and, um, one-thirty-four Druid, Russell Island. And, the zoning board appears. So per ordinance, number one-twenty-six, section three dot zero-one dot one, we are the closest property owners in regards to the above, RIPOA property. My wife, Gina Niedermeyer, and I, Robert Niedermeyer, see no problems with allowing the variance requested. This will not interfere with our property whatsoever, and we will approve this request. Respectfully submitted, Robert and Gina Niedermeyer, and lot four-two-two, and lot four-two-three Druid Drive.
Anyone else wish to speak? I'm gonna close public comment. Now, who do you have a question for?
Anthony, I just have a quick question.
Come on up, Anthony, please. Did you guys all see the pictures as he's walking up?
Yeah. How will the, um, owners access this unit? So is it, is it gonna be locked? Do they have a key?
It, it'll be under locking key, and they'll be, if we're lucky, we're thinking maybe a half, six times a year is what they'll be accessed to. It's to get equipment out to maintain our decommissioned roads.
Okay.
So we re, I don't wanna say we, we sometimes lay gravel down, we have a Harley rake that we go and we smooth our roads out, uh, things of that nature basically get done. Um, some storage of our decorations that we put down at our ferry landing, some totes, some historical records, things of that nature, which is gonna be stored in there.
So who will have access?
Just, just the, uh, if you wanna say just the board members-
Okay.
-of, of the Russell Island Property Owners Association, they'll the one, I'll have the key, since I'm the president right now, but I hope I get to pass it on soon.
My concern was just that it's just not left open.
It will not be left open, no. No, we're doing this because in the past, we've had break-ins on the island, and I'm talking years back, and we're just trying to keep all our stuff under, under lock and key and make it last as long as we possibly can-
Okay.
-without having to replace it.
Thank you.
All the stuff is currently obviously kept outside?
It is, and it's all tarp every season.
Is it on that property? Like, is that where it's maintained, stays on that property?
Right, right now, I would say about eighty percent of it is. The only thing that's really not down there are the fire pumps that are in the one picture, and we did also acquire two more fire pumps, so those will be going down there also.
Do you ever have plans on doing like a permanent structure there?
We would love to do a permanent structure there, as far as a storaged structure, that's, yeah.
So now our ordinance just doesn't allow you, because it doesn't have a main dwelling on it, so?
Correct. So we figure this is our, our next best shot would be, we can get storage this way. We're not asking for power, septic, any of that. All we wanna do is to store our equipment.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, one question. So, I know, I, I know in the past that we don't allow, you know, store stuff on, on Russell Island, or we have it. Um, but this is kind of like the whole community. I mean, can we not, like, I mean, besides the containers, I mean, is there any other, there's no, like, forgiveness here? There's, I, I guess I'm asking for-
And, and that's the thing, you know, for the last few years, they have made various attempts, uh, to do a garage closer to the ferry landing, where we could say like use, uh, and put up a garage close to the ferry landing. And that kinda got shot down by area residents that said, hey, this thing's like blocking our view, and the, you know, view of the, the river. And that kinda got shot down and pushed away. And so this was like an alternative. Now, we couldn't say like use, 'cause it was nowhere near the ferry, but it's in a, it's owned by the, the association. Uh, it's in a landlocked area, it's away from it all, it's, it's a place that is gonna preserve their equipment to maintain their properties. Yes, it's residential, but, um, yeah, I think there should be an exception made here. And keep in mind that, yes, it's shipping containers, but it's gonna fall under section three point one-six, that, that it's gonna have a pitched roof over these things. The facade is gonna be, um, you know, wood, so it's gonna look like a building. Um, you know, it's got a hollow middle in it, but it's gonna look like a building. It's not gonna look like shipping containers. So it's not gonna, aesthetically, it's gonna look okay. Uh, and it's in a wooded area that nobody's gonna see it, uh, kinda thing, it's gonna blend in. And I think it's, it's better to preserve their equipment, it's for the betterment of the entire island and community. I think it fits here.
If, if this variance in our verbiage, if we were to all agree... Anthony, how big are these containers? Ten by forty, forty? You got a forty by fifty area that's gonna be, say, stoned, or... I'm just trying to avoid if they ever did a, a permanent. I know this is gonna be permanent because it's cargo, but if it's not, something happens to where it's not, is there anything in our verbiage that we could say that we're, we could allow them to build a, what is the in-between the buildings? Gary, what's in between the storage?
It's an open space.
What's the, what's the dimension?
Uh, I think ten feet, too.
Five-five.
Yeah, this is five-five, that's ten, yeah.
I mean, if we said that we would allow for a thirty by forty storage facility on this piece of property, which is the exact dimensions of the-
Two of them together?
Okay.
Because the variance carries with the piece of property. If, for some reason, they say, well, I wanna get rid of these, would we allow them to put like a pole barn up there, or something, a different structure? Or you want it to be temporary? Is there a time limit on, on this?
No, there would be no. I mean, if you're gonna allow this, um, you know, an accessory, this is in fact gonna be an accessory structure under three point one-six, that says if you're gonna use shipping containers as an accessory structure, a permanent accessory structure under three point one-six, uh, it just has to look like, uh, accessory structures found in a residential district. So, these would meet that criteria in three point one-six for permanent structure. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be temporary.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions for anybody? They can't put-
No, they should've tried.
They can't put, uh...
What's the difference? There's none.
That's Stone Road. You just, oh, I thought you made, I thought you said, read it, I'm like-
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's never gonna be a house, per se, on that?
Cause, does, did you say that HOA owns the land, the property? Or who owns it?
Russell Island Property Owners Association.
Okay.
I sure would rather look at something than all this stuff. Any other discussion? Just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Based off of exactly how it's written.
With the practical difficulty.
The practical difficulty is that they, they have all of this equipment just laying out with tarps over it, and the building is a necessity to them, keeps their equipment longer, um, and, um-
Public use?
Public use, exactly. So if anyone has equipment, they're allowed to use it. Um, and I honestly don't see the reason why they can't have it, so.
I second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve as written. Uh, roll call, please.
Margie Ferris, yes. Carla?
Yes.
Joe is not here. Sherry?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Never been there.
Uh, it just gets shuffled.
Give her a minute. Do you want your pictures back?
Do you guys need or?
No.
I think they'll be in the file, but, no.
It's up to you, Gary, do you have a, you sure any of that?
No.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I was surprised, loved it, loved it in St. Clair Shores. That's what I was like, oh. Then I was like, oh, he's the president, that makes sense.
There'll never be, there'll never be a main structure on that, to be able to have a storage unit or an accessory unit, for allowing the whole island to be able to enjoy
That kind of crunches?
Okay, for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, we're gonna open up the next one. Uh, JZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero twelve applicant at eight-four-six-three Colony Drive.
Yeah, I'm here for Austin Hoffner, eight-four-six-three. I'm Pat Baldwin, speaking on behalf as a builder, uh, requesting, uh, building permit for a boathouse with storage over the top. Um, I've built multiple ones, and it falls under the criteria of other boathouses that we have built in the area on, on Colony. And, that's what I'm here for.
What was your name one more time?
Uh, Pat Baldwin.
Pat, alright, thanks, Pat. Okay, Pat, I'm sure Mark's gonna speak, so if you wanna sit for one second, I'll open up a public comment.
So in terms of the first thing, is it relative to the property? No, absolutely not. It's not relative to the property, so based on that, it should be no. But because as they pointed out in their, uh, application, everyone else got a variance. This is why it's so important that when you write a variance, you make sure it doesn't carry on like this, because you get a situation like this. Uh, as long as they got no one else to disapprove of it, I guess you can okay the variance. But again, you may wanna start writing the variance and make sure that everyone and their brother just hasn't started copying them. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? I'm gonna close public comment. Gary, can you, is this, I guess, explain? Nope, sorry, sorry, Pat. I mean, we, we've allowed a lot of these already.
Yes, we have.
You know what I mean? And, and again, each one's individual, um, but it's not anything different than, it's already there, like-
Correct.
On the street, I should say.
Correct. And, you know, what, uh, what they are approving, what they are asking for is second floor. They are asking for eight-foot ceilings. They are asking for it to be storage. Um, if you do agree to approve, um, they are, uh, they have included a half-bath on the first floor. Um, I would recommend that we, um, stipulate that there's no plumbing on the second floor to discourage any habitable space on the second floor. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's nothing that, uh, is unusual for that street at this point.
Gary, did you say that there's a half-bath on the first floor?
First floor, on the plan, uh, there is a half-bath on the first floor.
Oh, that, oh, I see.
Which we would-
We would never allow it over the boathouse, over that water.
I love these.
Well, Pat, I have a question. I'm sorry, Gary. Um, why are the eight-foot ceilings necessary, if it's a storage?
Um, just for, I mean, they can't have them like six foot, I mean, you couldn't get up in there. There's no, this isn't no higher than, so here is, uh, this is, they're both neighboring projects. This is two doors to the left, and this is two doors to the right. So we're not being any taller than any of the boathouses on either side. They're built exactly the same.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did the boathouse get tore down beforehand?
No, there was no boathouse there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see, I-
No.
Yeah, there was something there. Got it.
That's just you. It's totally fine. This is very typical of the neighborhood. Those are the neighbors.
Those were both built in the last- Those were both built in the last two years. The yellow one was built last year, and the gray one...
On the core side.
Yes.
Both of them?
Yes.
No. It's basically... That's what it is, but no, you can't just write that.
Are there going to be any windows on this upstairs?
Um, you have the prints.
I'm just trying to look at hers, because we all don't have them.
Yeah, I'm the only one that has the...
I do too, but I don't know how to fully read them.
Her copy. She double copied it.
That's the bell. Side view, side view.
Pat, actually, it doesn't show the elevation on there.
You did?
Yeah, that's not...
There is a gable window that is facing, um, over the boat house side, and then there is another window on the second story over the rock side.
So, no door walls, no balconies, no anything like that?
Yeah, that's weird. Usually, we do get a...
Was it in the update?
Yeah, this is what you requested.
Yeah, we usually have a... Three, four, three, two. We're missing four.
When you say four, what were the numbers?
That's four, so...
That's the foundation plan, floor plan.
One, two. Three. Four. It looks similar to this, then?
Yes.
Not that one. I know it's not that one.
No, 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 no. That one's, uh... That one's a lot bigger than what we're building. It's like almost identical to this... Not this balcony, but this window facing over the boat house here. And then instead of that balcony, there is just a big window facing back at the house there. But they... There's a balcony here. They have a front and rear balcony on that one. So... Yeah.
Yeah, I have all those. Yep. Any other questions for anybody? I'm just telling you, in the past, you guys are newer to the board. In the past, Colony has had multiple boat houses in the past. I've been on the board, what, 10 years plus? And at least Prokowsky comes in at least once a year.
Who's that?
Tom Prokowsky. He was just in here. I don't know. I thought you guys... One of you guys were in here, right? Margie, maybe it was before your time?
He's doing one two doors down.
Yeah, that's the one.
Same style.
You know, I think Stevenson did that big gray one a few years back. I'm just saying, you guys have not been here in the past for some of these. This is not, not typical. This is very typical of Colony.
So, why don't we change, um... Guidelines for Colony?
We've talked about that in the past, and that's not what the township wants to do, is to say the right word. Let one road be... Different ordinances just for that road versus others. Right, Gary? Trust me, I've asked you multiple times, and I'm being very polite. But it's more... It's not Gary. It's by no means is it Gary's decision to change an ordinance at all, and even for a road at all.
So, the practical difficulty? Practical difficulty is what?
No basements.
Need storage?
No basements.
No basements, yeah.
No, nothing for, for storage, and that's what boat houses always been for, is upper storage.
There's no plumbing up to the second floor?
Definitely could state that, you know, no plumbing, you know, in our ordinance, it does state that you cannot...
There was no intent, no intent for plumbing or anything like that.
For the second floor?
There was no intent to.
They have a garage, correct?
I'm sorry?
They have a garage on the house?
Yes. Uh, yes, it's a small garage.
In our ordinance, do say that you're not allowed to have any kind of plumbing above water. So, that would...
I think that half bath is in the garage, so...
And our HOA... Our HOA approved it. Already approved by HOA and Eagle.
Okay, I guess I'm going to make an motion to approve... Oh, where are we at? JZBA 2025-012, application for 8463 Colony Drive, ordinance 126.
Hold on one second. I heard you did. No, go ahead. You're good.
Okay.
My bad.
Suction 3.016 states that you are asking for an additional 15 feet? No. Structure to be 27.6 feet, as long as there's no bathroom on the second floor. And because of your practical difficulty being that there's no basements and no storage, and the additional space above is going to be storage only.
Storage only.
Okay. And it will never be living space?
No.
Okay. That was motion, so I second it. Yeah.
Okay, you second it?
Yeah, sorry, I said that. Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I didn't. I asked a question, then I said it. Motion to approve. Margie Ferris?
Hang on.
Oh.
So, we have a motion and a second. No more discussion? All right.
Margie Ferris, yes. Carla?
Yes.
Joe is not here. Sherry?
Yes.
Madica?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's approved.
All right, thank you.
You want these back, Patrick?
Okay, so this next one, we have letters, so let me get organized here. Yeah, hang on. Everybody, everybody read this?
Yeah.
Sherry, did you read this?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm good. Oh, I just let her give a little reading. I'll ask Gary.
That's Gary. Okay, we're all... That's him.
You guys are all here for Colony, or for One on Island? Is anyone gonna... Like, when I say public comment, she's writing, we got a minute. I have a lot of letters. Is anyone... Did they... Anyone write a letter that wants to speak tonight, or just read the letter? Okay, perfect. Good?
Go ahead.
Okay. Next case is JZBA 2025-013, applicant at 1870 South Channel Drive. Please come up, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Board. I'm Gary Yonaric. I'm an attorney retained by the property owners in conjunction with this application for variances for this boat house that was partially constructed. 43260 Garfield, Clinton Township, Michigan. The marine contractor submitted the application, and then I submitted a supplemental document in support of the variance request, where I outlined some of the issues involved, that my clients had obtained a permit from the DQ slash Eagle and from the Corps of Engineers to build the structure that was started. Subsequent to those two permits being issued, Clay Township Building Department issued a building permit, and construction started. Subsequent to that, there was a notice posted that construction had to stop, so they filed this variance request. In support of the variance request, we submitted that letter that outlined certain legal principles, but we also gave to you two surveys, one showing the property from several years ago, one that was just recently done by BMJ, showing the reconfiguration, moving the dock end out of the Saint Clair River to the left as you face from the shore, so that it would not be in alignment of the neighbor's property. And Exhibit 3 showed some dimensions for the property, and then there was the Corps of Engineers and Eagle's permit that showed the dimensions for this particular structure. I did want to exhibit to you, because I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to go over there and look at it, some photographs. This was Exhibit 8. It's a series of four photographs. This is my client's facility, boat house. There's basically eight feet from the dock to the bottom of the board. The board generally pursues your ordinance, as the board can only come down three feet. It comes down six. Because we all know, if you live... I lived in Clint... Or Chesterfield Township in Baltimore all my life. The water fluctuates. A few years ago, it was probably two and a half to three feet higher than it is now, because I own a vacant lot in Chesterfield. I measured it two days ago. It's three feet below where it was at the high watermark. So, when the water was high, the water was basically at his dock. So, when boats, pleasure boats go by, or the freighters go by, if you've been on the river, when the freighter goes by, it sucks the water out, and then the waves come in. And so, you have to have some margin of safety so that his boat is hoisted farther out of the water, and that's why there's the higher structure. And the distance from the dock to this is 10 feet, and I believe your ordinance says it has to be at least eight, so there is more clearance. This is the neighbor's boat house to the left as you face the river. And you can see, we moved the dock over so that we wouldn't encroach on the neighbor to the right as you face the water. And this part would be sided. The roof trusses are in place. There'd be a metal roof on top of that. His boat would not be stored there in the wintertime. And it's a center console with a high structure that has navigation equipment on top of the canopy, so he needs the greater height to jack the boat out of the water in the boating season because of wave action. This is a different project. But I believe in...
Reusing.
And then, these are some photographs that we recently took. So, this is my client measuring it shows 10 feet from where he stand on the dock to the bottom of the board. It come down six feet. This is the measuring device. And then this is some similar boat houses that are totally enclosed along the South Channel. This one, just one structure, and then this one, we believe has four. And like the previous one, when you go on the Colony Drive and other areas on Harson's Island, there's boat houses that are totally closed in that are relatively, let's say, in the last five, eight years, structures that have that configuration. I do have a series of those same pictures that I want to give to you, because sometimes, recently, I've been practicing law for 50 years, just one time recently, I had the big picture. They didn't have it in the record. They said it wasn't filed in the record on appeal. So, this is, uh...
Thanks.
Letter size.
It's good to know.
Appreciate it.
And then various neighbors did submit letters where they indicated that they had no objection to this. And recently, we got one more letter from Janet Steele, who lives at 1880 South Channel. So, I wanted to give you that. And it's addressed to Mr. Trepp on the board members. There might be two.
I think this is in here.
I got it, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
As I indicated in our supplemental letter, the idea behind the Zoning Enabling Act that has specific provisions, that say, a local municipality has to have a ZBA, a property owner has the right by statute to come to the ZBA and ask for variances. The statute, in your ordinance, basically points out that there has to be flexibility when a person applies for a variance request. And in this situation, given the fact that permits were issued, construction started pursuant to the permits, the basic part of the structure is completed. The roof needs to be put on and the siding. The steel structures will be painted, and one's visibility through the boat house meets your criteria. It exceeds it what's supposed to be eight feet, and it's at 10. And the only real difference is that we're coming down three feet. And in the off-boating season, when the boat's not there, you'll be able to look through it and see the other side into Canada. And earlier, the chairman made reference to Walpole Island. I thought maybe your ZBA was taking jurisdiction over Canada. It's not the 51st state, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. So, the... And we gave the case law as to the flexibility, and we think that our client is entitled to the variance as requested. And if you had any questions, we try to answer them. And my client is here. And the marine contractor is here also.
Who do you want us to ask questions to?
No, if you had any questions, it's me.
I... At this point, not yet.
Okay.
But we have a lot of letters and...
Right.
We have another presentation. All right, thank you. But stay tuned, Gary. Okay, so I'm going to open up public comment. Two, hang on. Let me state the... For the 1870 South Channel, please state your name and address. Did you write a letter by chance?
No.
Okay.
John Coletti. I'm at 1765 South Channel. I've been a long-term resident of Harson's Island. I've been a long-term resident of Harson's Island. About 14 years ago, I applied for a variance, an 11-inch variance into the 25-foot setback that had a garage onto my house, so that my wife will feel more secure coming in in the wintertime. And it was denied because of the 11-inch intrusion into the 25-foot setback. And I understand that people were trying to protect the river view, which is important for all the residents up and down the South Channel. This summer, I came back from vacation, and I was having breakfast, and I look out, and I see what I thought they were building Noah's Ark just down the road from me. And I said, Jesus, what the hell's going on? If you guys like, I'd show you pictures of why I thought it was Noah's Ark. If you, if you look at the, the structure, the building. And I thought, I can't see, in the past, I could see the freighters coming down, but this thing just blocks out the whole, the whole thing. And all I'm getting at is this thing is large. The skirt on the side is huge. It blocks the view. It dominates the, the, the view. And I'm thinking to myself, if we were all trying to protect the river view for the residents up and down South Channel, this thing doesn't do it, this thing violates it. So I would put it in your lap to say, guys, you know, I go back 14 years ago, I was denied for an 11-inch incursion. Now we're talking about building something pretty large, and nobody seems to have a problem with it. That's all I got to say. If you guys would like to see the pictures.
Do you have a boathouse?
Yeah, but I don't have any skirts on my boathouse, I don't have anything. Okay? And by the way, the same marine guy built my boathouse. Okay, I don't know, 14, 15 years ago. So I would ask you guys, variances, variances, you know, I remember 14 years ago, they were pretty hard and fast about protecting the river view. And I would say you should do it today also.
Has he has a boathouse? Oh, what? How do you know? Have you seen it? His?
Yeah, can I see his?
Of the Noah's Ark?
Yeah, why is he, because it
That's just a picture of the boathouse.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know what I mean, that's
No, I get it. That's, okay, yeah.
She wants to see her Noah's Ark.
That's the one right here, I see.
I was watching, uh
Sorry.
She's like, I want to see the picture, something like, of Noah's Ark?
No, listen, I was watching Ancient Aliens, and that's what they have. Now look at this. That's what they're building, and that's what I saw on TV.
That's the same.
I mean, it doesn't have windows, thank God. That's what I'm looking at from, I was having breakfast, and that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the neighbor, now the people alongside are looking, it's like looking at a 747. If you look dead center at the airplane, you don't see anything, right? But if you look at it from the side, it's huge.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Is that picture from your, your view?
From my, from my house.
Am I good? Yep, state your name and address, please.
Well, thank you, ZBA Board Members from Clay Township, for allowing me to speak about the non-conforming boathouse variance at 1870 South Channel Drive. My name is Gary Benovich, I'm here with my wife Lori and my mother Norma. We have been non-homestead taxpayers since 1986, or since October of 1996 at 1860 South Channel. We are the neighbor directly next to the, the petitioner. When the boathouse roof got installed, I immediately contacted Mr. Burrell, the Clay Township Building and Zoning Inspector, who verbally advised during numerous direct phone calls that he made a mistake approving the boathouse roof permit. He verified he overlooked the two dimensional, two non-conforming dimensions on the initial submitted drawings. He sincerely apologized for his error. Mr. Burrell's a stand-up guy who admitted, who admitted fault. Clay Township should be proud of such, to have such a responsible individual as its zoning and building inspector. Good job, Gary. The letter to the right is a, is a letter from my neighbor to the ZBA acknowledging that Mr. Burrell told him that the roof permit was, was approved by mistake. So this is the zoning ordinance. 126, it says the boathouse shall not exceed 15 feet in height except as provided below. We're not contesting this. We don't, we understand that he has a large boat that's tall, and he needs the extra height. At 17 and a half feet, we don't have a problem with it. What we do have a problem with is the side enclosures. As stated by the gentleman before, he's asking for six feet. It's clearly states in Section 301, accessory buildings, structures, and uses under 8E enclosure. In residential districts, any new boathouse located between the principal structure and the open, and any open body of water constructed after the effective date of this ordinance, a lot of boathouses our grandfathered in, and the heights of no less than eight feet above the land level. This is to permit fully enclosed boathouses. And enclosed a distance of not more than three feet down from the top of the structure's top plate. He's obviously six feet. It's, it, it doesn't blend with the neighborhood at all. All other structures on, all other structures are less than six feet. Now my neighbor, the homeowner at 1870 South Channel, owns an electrical contracting business. That's been in, he's been in business for 38 years. We must assume he's well-versed in ordinances, building codes, variances, and zoning rules. We can only assume as a professional in the building trades industry, he should have known better than submitting plans for a non-conforming boathouse without variance approval beforehand. Here's a slide from the Better Business Bureau indicating his years in business, 38 years. Another slide from Dun &amp; Bradstreet shows my neighbor as the key principle of this business. Now how did we get here? When my neighbor first moved in, he built a conforming boathouse. This isn't his first rodeo, he's been here before. We had no problem with this boathouse. Totally conforming, didn't block our view at all, hardly. He had a pretty big boat, no problems. He tore all that up and submitted plans for a non-conforming boathouse. Okay, so now what must be proven to the ZBA for this, to approve this boathouse variance application? There are many criteria, all outlined in your zoning ordinance that you should follow. Unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty doesn't really exist if he would have come to you beforehand. He would, he could have properly built his boathouse with the side enclosures. And if he needed more height, he could have came to you and asked for it. He didn't. It's unique to the property. There's nothing unique about this property. There are seven 50-foot lots on that row of houses. All of them have conforming boathouses, but one, one was grandfathered in. Not self-created, this is 100% self-created. He, he bought a bigger boat and then decided to build a roof over it so he wouldn't have to cover it. Minimum necessary variance, respects the spirit of the ordinance. The ordinance is for protecting the South Channel property owners, protecting their views. That's the nature of the ordinance. He, he ignored that. No harm to the public interest. I'd like to point out the last sentence. For a boathouse, this includes ensuring the project does not impair neighbors' views or obstruct access. He does both. Now let's go to the supplemental information that was supplied. Practical difficulty. Not sure if I need to read all this, but the practical difficulty exists on a site generally as physical characteristics such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape or area, presence of floodplain, or exceptional topographic conditions, and strict compliance with zoning ordinances would prevent the owner from using the site for, for the permitted use or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. What is he, how does he respond? This arises from the functional and structural requirements of a building, of building a covered boathouse. The ordinance limits the height, however taller roof is needed, to safely hoist the boat. We couldn't agree more. Go ahead, build your boathouse at 17 and a half feet. Additional height and knee walls are needed to safely raise and protect the boat. The, the lift is a separate structure from the roof. There, there's nothing necessary about the roof. A lot of, a lot of boathouses, or a lot of boat lifts on South Channel don't even have a roof. So we, so there is no practical difficulty. Okay, here's some, here's some pictures of, uh, here's some pictures of the immediate area. You can see the petitioner's boathouse, our boathouse, and other boathouses. These boathouses were fairly duly built, all are conforming, except this. It doesn't fit the neighborhood, doesn't blend in. Looking north at houses located between 1965 and 2155 South Channel, there are eight boathouses with roofs. None have side enclosures taller than three foot. Friends of ours just built a brand-new boathouse at 1500 South Channel for a center council boat, just like our, just like our neighbors. He has a three-foot side enclosure. He's, he might be a little tall, but you guys approved it. No problem with that. Here's another picture of that same boathouse from the street level. It blends in, looks good. Point number two, unique situation. The demonstrated practical difficulty results from special or extraordinary circumstances that exist which are particular, are peculiar to the land's structure or building involved and are not generally applicable to other lands, structures, and buildings in the same district. The unique situ, he responds, "The unique situation stems from the fact that this is a waterfront property where a covered boathouse is reasonable and expected accessory usage." We couldn't agree more, we have one. But what we disagree with, but the size of the boat requires a taller roof, okay, and knee walls to allow the boat to be properly and safely hoisted and stored. The knee walls have nothing to do with hoisting the boat. It doesn't add any structure to the, to the, to the lift or the, or the roof. It, it's not necessary, it's overkill. Here are five boathouses between 2450 and 2554 on South Channel. None have side enclosures taller than three foot. Point number four, not self-created, this is entirely self-created, 100%. He tore out an old boat, a conforming boat lift, and put this monstrosity in. I mean, for his million-dollar, 40-foot-plus boat on a 50-foot lot. He goes on to say, "The difficulty is not self-created. The property was purchased with the intention to enjoy normal lake activities, including safe boat storage. The hoist roof is being designed to blend in with the surrounding environment." Blend in with the surrounding environment, it doesn't. And other similar structures in the area, not true. And the requested variance is, is the minimum needed to allow for proper functionality and code compliance. Not really. Here's the fourth point, substantial justice. The variance would prove, would provide substantial justice by granting property rights similar to those properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. It would not confer, confer special privileges denied to other properties in the zoning district. The result of the variance should be, should not be potentially harmful to adjacent properties, it is, such as restricted access or view, which it does. Noise, lights, or any other effect not normally experienced by property owners in similar conditions. He goes on to say, "Granting the variance will do substantial justice because it allows the homeowner to make reasonable use of their property and boathouse. Denying the variance would prevent proper use of the boathoist due to clearance limitations, which would be an unnecessary burden on the property owner. Furthermore, granting the variance will not harm public's interests or neighboring properties, as it will not block use or access." This is my view out of my front porch. Unlike other neighbors who've expressed support
Gary, is that your boathouse right there?
That's my boathouse right there. Unlike other neighbors who've expressed, who've expressed support via the letters, the boathouse is directly in front of my residence. They don't have to look out their front window and look at this thing. I do. I'll have to look at that for the rest of my life. Unacceptable, unacceptable, this should have never been approved. Number five, not contrary to the ordinance. Requested variance is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, because the purpose of the height, the purpose of the height and the knee wall restriction is to prevent oversized, intrusive, and out of, out of scale structures that negatively affect neighbors. That does it all. It's intrusive, out of scale, and it negatively affects our, our view. And now look at this thing. You know, he put this boathouse, let's go back one, let's go back one slide. Here's my boathouse. He put a, he put a sun deck behind my boathouse. I have to maneuver my boat around his sun deck to get into my boathouse.
Where's the property line at, right there?
The property does go through my boathouse, I'm grandfathered in. I bought the property like that, not knowing where it was, I didn't build that boathouse. But it does go down through the, quite close to the center of the boathouse. So technically, he's, he's basically on his property, so I can't, I can't complain there. Not very neighborly. Here's another picture of it. Here's his sun deck. And what kills me about this one too, he goes on to say, "The structure is open-sided, non-habitable boathoist cover, designed to protect the boat." That's why we're here. That's why he wants six-foot sidewalls to protect his boat. Nothing structural or functional about that. It's protect his boat, period. This is even better, "and facilitate lift, safe lift operation. It will not block use and is consistent with other similar structures in the area." False. "The design respects the ordinances to preserve neighborhood character, limit structural mass." Does this thing limit structural mass? He built it as wide as he could do it. What if every homeowner on South Channel built his, built their dock as wide as they possibly could? Would you guys approve that too? Again, he put, he put his boat on that lip before the roof was even on him. There's no structural functionality on that, it's to protect his boat, period. What does the Clay Township Master Plan have to say about all this? According to a, the, a public input survey, over 250 people responded to the Master Plan's online survey.
Does this have to do with the boathouse?
Well, it just shows that, it, it, what I'm trying to get at is, when asked what the most important factors are that contribute to the quality of life here in Clay Township, it's quality of homes, access to waterfront, open spaces. You can go a long way by here by restricting this, this side enclosure here. Again, we're not worried about the height. You guys get very poor ratings on zoning code enforcement. Now I wonder why, I can't believe that. Goals and objectives. We want to maintain support and enhance protective character of residential areas. Please. Don't let this variance go through. Okay, key points to remember in closing. No practical difficulty exists. The lift does not require a non-conforming roof to function and safely lift the boat. The lift is a separate structure from the roof structure. The boat was safely lifted prior to the installation of the roof structure. Not a unique situation. There are no special or extraordinary circumstances that exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or 50-foot waterfront lot at 1870 South Channel. There are seven adjacent 50-foot lots on the nearby row of houses. All adjacent boathouses, non-grandfathered, are conforming. Not self-created, this is, issue is 100% self-created. Purchasing a large boat should not necessitate the building of a non-conforming boathouse roof to protect it. Substantial justice, approving the variance application would confer special privileges at 1870 South Channel, denied to other property owners in their zoning district. The result of the variance would 100% be harmful to adjacent property and, and by restricting river views and set an undesirable precedent. If it passes, many property owners, including me, will request similar enclosure dimensions. All along South Channel will have six-foot enclosures, if you guys pass this tonight. Not contrary to the ordinances, approving the requested variance would undermine the purpose and intent of zoning ordinance number 126 as it relates to adjoining properties. It is the ZBA's responsibility and ability, Inspector, to protect waterfront property owners against boathouses that restrict river views. Please right or wrong by not establishing a bad precedent that results in similar view-limiting future boathouse roofs. Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Who owns the enclosed boathouse?
Mr. Aaron Data.
Hang on. Hang on one second.
Hang on. Mark, hang on a second.
He's here. He can answer your questions. That was Grandfathered. As are all other fully enclosed boathouses that I know of.
Okay, next person. And then we have letters.
So, all night I've been saying there's two things. One, is it part of the property? No, absolutely not. Is this part of the property? The lawyer himself said it's the boat. It says in the application process, it's part of the boat. As the previous speaker told, it's part of the boat. Second of all, can anyone else do this? As the previous speaker pointed out, yes, everyone's going to be able to do this. There's one thing I know about the people on South Channel. They lot more money than brains. So this will be a... As you know, they'll all whip it out and see who's got the biggest one. With that, if you don't mind, I'm going to go through the numbers. You're asking for a 12% variance on height and 100% variance on the knee wall. If you were going speeding and a police officer pulled you over, he may give you the 12% over. He's not going to give you a 100% variance on speed. You should not be able to give him 100% variance on a knee wall. Unique to the property, a difficulty must be unique to the specific parcel. As we pointed out, the water goes up and down for everybody on South Channel. There's nothing about his property that's unique. A variance should be the minimum necessary. They just made the variance based on what they needed. So again, that's part of the boat. Invalid practical difficulty. This request would be denied if the homeowner simply wants a bigger garage. That's an example where the zoning boards would say no. Now, let's get into the board's role is quasi-judicial, meaning its decision must be based on specific legal criteria, not solely on public opinion. It's nice that neighbors support their other neighbors. We don't get that kind of support, but it's nice to see other neighbors get it. But it doesn't affect your decision in terms of what the zoning board ordinance says. I'm going to go through some of the lawyer stuff pretty fast, you know, because I'm not a lawyer. He talks about flexibility be provided. Again, a 12% variance, maybe. You could talk about... A 100% variance, that's not flexibility. That's bending it over and taking it up to you-know-what. There's nothing flexible about a 100% variance. He says Article 38C, you can give boathouses at higher than fifteen feet in height if it can fit two boats, subject to a variance. Now, my dad's got a fourteen-foot boat. He easily can fit two fourteen-foot boats in his boathouse. He can go up in height. He can get longer walls, too, right? These people can't even fit one boat in their supposedly two-bow boathouse. So again, even the lawyer himself admits their boat is the size of two most people's boats. Again, practical difficulty. That's been beaten to death already. And then the lawyer talks about the sacrosite right of individuals. You know, this is like saying you got free speech, but there are certain words you can't say. This idea that we got a sacrosite right... I have kids. We have kids I walk across. You have noise that you got to deal with. You really don't have a right to your property, and especially to block the vision of everybody else. That's not right. And lastly, I'm just going to go through the application process. It says right there in Section 2, "The size of the boat requires a taller roof." That alone should be enough for the zoning board to say, "No, this isn't our problem. It's the size of the boat." Furthermore, it says, "It enjoys normal lake activities, including safe boat storage." I'm an unemployed engineer who's overeducated. You have a bell curve with a distribution. Most people have one engine on their boats. Some people have two engines on their boats. He has three engines on his boats. There's nothing normal about that. He is in the anomaly, so no, there's nothing normal about that. It says, "Prevent proper use of the boat hoist due to clearance limitations." So again, it has nothing to do with the boat, as the previous speaker pointed out. Every other boat up and down South Channel could fit into this proposed boathouse, no problem. It's only his boat that can't fit into the boathouse. And it says, "It negatively affects the neighbor shorelineer..." Or in Roman, I think the previous person told you about that. And then this idea of it deviates slightly. Whoever wrote this needs to go back and understand what an adjective is. Slightly for a 100% variance is not slightly. That's like killing someone and saying, "I just temporarily just pierced their skin a little bit." No. No, you deviated by 100%. So if you do approve this variance, you're going to have to be ready because everybody else is going to want it. Margie and I were talking about the other day about how to bring more money into this township. Approve this variance and watch all the money people on South Channel come up to you and ask for the exact same thing. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak? We have some letters that we have to read.
Bill Smith, 1800 South Channel. I have no objection to this. It's ridiculous. I'm not going to grandstand. Right now, at the end of my dock, I can see two and a half miles downstream. If it were to lower two and a half feet and have a three-foot face on it, I'd be blocked off. I wouldn't be able to see one half mile downstream. So I have no objection to this. It's high. I love it.
Thank you. Can you turn that thing on, please?
Yeah.
They get great in their eyeballs. Thank you. Thank you.
What was your address? 1800?
Okay, anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Brett Cale. I'm with Ron's Marine. I live at 6614 Gina, Marine City. His zip code's 48039. Obviously, I'm the one building the boathouse and the structure. Part of the reason we're here this evening and part of the problem is a building permit was issued, so building did commence and did start on this project. I had my Eagle permits, Army Corps permits. I have a building permit. Obviously, some things were overlooked. Some mistakes were made. Some was brought up about some other boathouses. The one that was pointed out in 1800 for Mr. Gentile, those walls are four-foot. And we've built multiple with four-foot walls. I've never been aware of three-foot knee wall variance ordinance in any of our previous constructions. So we had building permits. I had all the proper permits. I went through all the proper channels. I had building permits in hand prior to ordering any building materials for said project, before commencing any building, and we got stopped our way through construction of this building. Yes, Jeff has a large boat. You're allowed to have a large boat. His entire project is on his property. This project also, once we started, was realized that it was partially on the neighbors' encroaching. So his whole entire dock and previous structure was removed. Moved over onto his property, so he is 100% within his property area. So that was a big change to allow, you know, the neighbor's property not to be impeded on. Unfortunately for Gary, because boathouse is on Jeff's property, so...
Partially.
Yes, partially. So Jeff's sizes of everything else are permitted by Eagle and Army Corps. He is within his property. Yes, I know we have the issue of the knee walls and the height. So yes, so that's where my difficulty comes in.
And you 100% built it per plans that you submitted?
100%.
Thank you, Brett.
So, thank you.
So Brett.
Hang on, hang on. We'll ask him questions. Let's get through these letters. All right, anyone else wish to speak? All right, we do have some letters. No, you've already... Go ahead.
Let me finish.
Yep.
It's a procedural issue. As the petitioner's attorney, I believe I have the right to speak as to some of the comments that the people made.
And I will ask for clarification on certain things. Is that okay? Can I read these letters first?
Sure.
And then... I have tons of questions, for sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, read these. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That one's a duplicate. Start reading, please.
Wow. All right. Grab your popcorn. All right. Good morning, Clay Township Building. Please find our letter that we would like to submit for the upcoming ZBA meeting, and we will also have a copy for this as the meeting to read and hand out as needed. Thank you. Jeff Boudreau. Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jeff Boudreau, and I live at 1870 South Channel, Harson's Island. And we are here before you today to approve and to continue to complete our new boat lift and cover structure. We went through all the proper channels of Eagle and Corps of Engineers' submittal and approval, and once accepted, they will be submitted to the township at Clay. We were given approval to move forward with the boat lift and cover structure on building permit PB 2025-0195 dated June 12, 2025. At that point, our contractor, Ron's Marine, started the demolition of our existing boat lift structure so they could construct our new, as per plan, submitted and were approved. This process started and continued for a few months and then one week, plus or minus, before we were completed. We were given a stop work order by Clay Township Building Inspector. We were told that even though our boat cover was approved and we're building it per the approved plans, it did not conform to township's ordinances, and we needed to stop construction. We were told that this was an approved by mistake, and we would need to rebuild to conform to the ordinances. We need the plan-approved height of this structure so that when high water comes back, which will be... It will... We can get both the boat and lift out of the water. If we cannot get the boat and lift out of the water, it will just get damaged with freighter and boat traffic. We have a lot invested in this structure, and we cannot go backwards and rebuild or remove the structure. If the township would have not approved our plans and told us the structure was too tall or not conforming, we would have moved forward on the boat lift but not on the cover structure that didn't conform. We are here today asking you to approve our variance request and let us complete the structure as submitted and approved. Please also see a few letters from our neighbors who stated that the lift and structure does not inhibit their view of the river or surrounding areas at all and would also like to grant us the variance to complete as submitted and approved. Thank you, Jeff Boudreau. Bordeaux, I think I'm saying that right. To whom it... You don't need me to do all that. "To whom it may concern. My name is David Lozon. I reside at 1910 South Channel on Harson's Island. My neighbor Jeffrey Boudreau, two doors adjacent from my house, resides at 1879 South Channel. Jeff is requesting the ZBA's approval at the October 12 meeting for his boat slip and hoist cover. Both my wife Lynn and myself have no issues with the now-built structure and encourage the ZBA to approve his request. Mr. Boudreau and his contractor have obtained all required permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, Eagle, and the Clay Township Building Department. Since the structure already exists, we have now had two months' opportunity to look at the boat enclosure roof, and we believe that it is not impeding or obstructing our view of the Sinclair River. Again, we request and encourage the ZBA to approve Mr. Boudreau's permit request. Respectfully, David C. Lozon at 1910 South Channel, Harson's Island. Dear ZBA members, it is understanding that construction of the boathouse at the above property was stopped due to an error made during the approval process. I understand that the plans submitted were approved but later found to be outside of the township ordinances. Given that the boathouse is almost complete, needs aluminum siding and roof, I hope that the board will vote to let the homeowner complete the project. I understand that mistakes happen and that this is one of those instances. While some mistakes can be corrected with some minor additions of time and money, this is not one of those instances. Insisting that the homeowner comply with the current ordinances would not only be very costly but also make the project a failure as it was intended. As I read the requirements as published to the Downriver Voice in September 17, 2025, the required changes would only make, in my opinion, minor changes to line of vision. Dropping the roof two and a half feet and reducing the side coverage to three foot versus six would not have any significant sight change to the lower part of the boathouse. The gain would solely over the top of the roof, granting more vision of the sky, treetops to Canada. I believe that the benefits gained by forcing the homeowner to follow current ordinances are completely outweighed by the significant cost, both actual construction and possible legal, and would be incurred by both parties. I live two houses south of the home in question. Roger Favreau at 1900 South Channel Drive. It is my understanding that the application for permit submission of documentation, dimensional drawings, and approvals for said structure were completed before any construction or reconfiguration of the prior structure was initiated. As a citizen of Clay Township and resident for over 20 years, I am dismayed the ZBA would even entertain opening hearing or considering a complaint after all permits and proper documentation have been submitted to and approved by the township. The request to increase the top plate, as described in the notice, to six foot is not an undue burden, nor does the difference between three and six feet make a material difference regarding blocking of views. Further, in many years as residents, I've witnessed multiple boathouses constructed and completed that were fully enclosed on all sides. Verton, Chartier, Stonebeck, to name just a few. I strongly request this board either dismiss or simply approve this matter as it has caused undue cost and stress to the homeowner, Mr. Boudreau at 1870 South Channel. I personally experienced a similar situation when said complainant objected to a ZBA approvals requested on minor deviation from plans for remodeling my home that would not have materially modified the structure or obstructed views. Costs exceeded $5,000 22 years ago. I fervently request the ZBA dismiss the case or simply approve this variance without modification to the plans submitted and permits properly approved by Clay Township. Sincerely, Bernardo Locata at 1870 South Channel Drive. Oh, no. CC. It doesn't say his address. Okay, just his phone number. It's 1825 South Channel Drive. Okay, regarding 1870 South Channel. Yeah, he's at 1825 South Channel Drive. Okay. Dear ZBA members, regarding the 1870 South Channel, it is understanding that the construction of the boathouse at the above property was stopped due to the error made during the approval process. We understand that the plans submitted were approved, including opportunity for the public feedback per the Eagle approval process but later found to be outside of the township ordinances. The changes to the lower roof will not work for this project. If the roof must be lowered, it would not serve its intended purpose. It would likely need to be removed, along with the boathouse structure, at great cost. Who would pay for this? The homeowners received all the required approvals prior to all the work commencing. The boathouse is almost complete. There's only a day or two of work to complete it. Why the work stoppage came at this hour of the project, we do not understand. We hope that the board will allow the project to be completed. We live 11 houses downstream of the boathouse in question. Sincerely, Mary Ellen Kalhoff at 1985 South Channel Drive. Dear ZBA members, regarding the 1870 South Channel, I am tracking the construction of the boathouse at the above property was stopped due to an error made during the approval process. I understand that the plans submitted were approved but later found to be outside the township ordinance. In my opinion, that boathouse construction should be allowed to be built in the approved plan. With most of the boathouses being complete, except the roof and the aluminum siding, having the homeowner adjust now would be a significant burden and cost that is not necessary. I'm hoping the board will allow the homeowner to complete the project. I live next door to the property in question and do not have any concerns of the boathouse. Janet Steele at 1880 South Channel Drive.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Gary Gitternalk, on behalf of the petitioner, I just wanted to point out a few things. In our supplemental letter, at the top of Page 3, I made reference to the variance provisions in the Clay Township ordinance. And it says, "Variants: Permission to depart from the literal requirement of this ordinance." Then the ordinance in Article Roman numeral 38(c), and I gave you the quotation, says, "All boathouses which exceed 15 feet in height..." And then the word "or," "with wells to accommodate more than two boats," shall be subject to a variance. So if you have a boathouse that's greater than 15 feet in height, your ordinance gives the property owner the right procedurally to request a variance. Or if they're going to build a facility to accommodate two boats, they have the right to seek a variance. So that's part of our basic legal position. So that's part of our basic legal position. And then part of our legal position, too, is some people that object say that it blocks their view. That's why I gave you that article from Bill Kasten that makes reference to Michigan Supreme Court decision that basically says, "Your right to a view is 90 degrees straight out of your property, not to the right, not to the left, straight out." So maybe Clay Township adapted this ordinance to protect allegedly the shoreline view. But Clay Township only has limited rights, and that article notes it, and that notes from the Michigan Supreme Court from the 1930s, basically, that you have the right to look out. Now, the gentleman next door, Gary, says he has no objections to the height of the building, his, the boathouse. His objection is to the side coming down six feet versus three. But the ordinance says you can get a variance. He acknowledges that his facility encroaches on my client's property. He asserts, well, he's grandfathered in because when he bought it, it was there. But that's not necessarily always a legal excuse. Sometimes it is. But we're not interfering with or asking him to take his facility out. His facility can stay there. And in the rebuilding process, we mitigated how my client's then-existing boathouse and boat dock encroached on the neighbor to the right. So, and everybody's basically said, and one thing that has to be noted, is that when you apply to Eagle and the Corps of Engineers for your permits, you have to give the Corps and Eagle information as to adjacent property owners along the road, the water right-of-way. So Gary, the neighbor who objects, he theoretically had noticed from Eagle and/or the Corps when my clients applied through the marine contractor for the permits from the Corps and Eagle. And if he had a grounds to object, he could have objected to those two agencies. The record would appear that he didn't object because the Corps and Eagle issued those permits and made no reference to an objection. Now, I've been here before where somebody wanted to do something in Clay Township. They applied for a permit. It was rejected by the building department because it exceeded the requirements of the ordinance. The people with my assistance applied for a variance and the variance was granted. So here, procedurally, it may have been correct that when Brett applied for the Clay Township permit, that the building department could have said, "You need a variance because your building's too high or your shard curtains are too far down." We all know that didn't occur. He's expended money in construction. The fact that he has three motors on his boat is not a reason to preclude his variance request. If you go on the Sinclair River, Lake Sinclair, there's a lot of boats that have three engines now. There's some boats that have four. Down the canal from me, there's three or four houses that have three and four engines on their center console boats. That's how boats are made. And that's not a reason to deny it. And it basically says that, we put in our letter, those several Michigan appellate court decisions, that says property owners have certain rights and that there has to be flexibility in adopting and applying ordinances to people's property and that they have the right to petition their local government to seek a variance. And your ordinance basically says when you're dealing with the boathouse, you have the right to seek a variance. So we would ask, and it would appear, there's two variances, one as to the height and one as to the extension, down six feet versus three feet. So when you take some action, I think you have to have two separate motions as to each of those issues. And if you had any questions of me or my client, he's here, we try to answer them.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Jeff, are you going to say anything different than you've already said in the letter?
I only wanted to just make--
Go ahead.
I'll make--
I am the homeowner, Jeff Bordeaux. I just want to clear the air on a couple of things. Yes, I am a contractor. I'm an electrical contractor. I have been in business of 38 years. I don't build structures. That's the reason that we made a submittal. We made this middle based on what we needed for the boat. Yes, the boat's a big boat. I shouldn't be chastised for having a bigger boat. There's big boats all up and down South Channel, Middle Channel, North Channel. We did not willfully submit a drawing knowing it was wrong. We submitted it. It was approved. We built our structure. That's really what it comes down to, is we're looking just to finish our structure that we have the permits for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bernard Locata, 1825 South Channel Drive. Seems like you folks have a tough decision tonight. I don't envy you. It would be good if you could come up with what I would think might be a good compromise. If you could come up with a good compromise so that we could continue to be good neighbors, that would be wonderful. It's a difficult situation you have to make tonight, a difficult decision. So that's all I have to say. I don't have an objection, however it turns out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer a compromise here. There is two variances being requested. One is for height and one is for the skirt length. I think if you guys went ahead and cut the bottom three feet off the skirt, just put a three-foot skirt on and left the height alone, I could live with, I could live with it, and I think everybody would be happy with it.
Yes.
I think the boat, that would actually cut some of the cost because you wouldn't have to put aluminum siding on the bottom three foot, and I think the homeowner would be happy and everybody would be happy. That's what I offer as a compromise.
Thank you. Man, that's what I didn't want. Keep it short, Mark, please.
Just a thing I forgot to add. It's 50-foot long is the boathouse. Times three-foot variance is what they're adding. That's 150 feet. From the front, it's another 47 feet. So that's eventually 200 square feet of additional blockage you're going to see. That's equivalent to six sheets of plywood, four-by-eight sheets. Plus, I'd like to respond to, yes, a lot of, there are three-engine boats, but they don't put their boats in boathouses if they have three engines. There's not a single example of a boathouse up and down South Channel that has multiple engines that is able to fit into a boat. So I'm not denying that three-engine boats don't exist, but they don't exist with boathouses. That's what I was trying to prove. Thank you.
They do. Holy cow.
Cory Steele, 53, 453 Woodside, New Baltimore, Michigan. I own 1880 South Channel directly to the right of Jeff. His original boathouse was partially encroaching on my property. No problems, easily to work with, moved it out, moved it over. His wall being six foot, if his boat's in there, I can still, still not going to see Downriver. I don't care. My mom doesn't care. Most of the neighbors don't care. Height don't bother us. The wall, we've owned that property for over seven years. I've been out there 50 years. I've seen boathouses built. I've seen them knocked down with freighters. It's horse shit. And sorry, I'm one of the people on South Channel that's overpriced and overpaid. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that. Allow me to go through it, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Brett, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions first.
Absolutely.
Come on up. So all my questions are loaded questions, obviously. You know that. When you supplied, when you submitted, I'm not going to go over, beat a dead horse by no means. You submitted all the, to Eagle first, correct?
Yes.
Got all the, all the plans?
Yep, Eagle, Army Corps, joint permit, yes.
Including, did you at that time have to change the, like, keep on your property? Did they catch that or did you guys do that on yourself?
Um, no, I think once the permitting started, that's where the issue came about of the repairing area and moving the, the structure and the new build over to make sure it's on Jeff's property.
Okay. And then you submitted to the township, same plans?
Yes.
And you built those plans?
Not the same plans as Eagle. The drawings are different. Between Eagle and the submitted application is different.
Is that true?
I don't believe that there's a difference. It's in the package, in the application. Look at the, look at the drawings. There's Eagle drawings and there's application drawings. They differ drastically. So the Eagle drawings are obviously site plan, side view, cross-section.
That's approved Eagle.
The additional drawings submitted to township are more detailed, more specific into the actual construction, the build, the dimensions of everything, building materials to be used.
So with this Eagle one, your, your total height would have been 22 feet?
Yes.
But you're, you're not at 22 feet.
No.
You're at 19 feet.
Six or something like that, yes. It's just a different plan.
Okay, but, but what I'm saying is, so that's, it's, it's less. So it could have went higher.
He mentioned that I didn't raise a stink about the Eagle plans. Eagle plans--
That's right. I'm just, I'm making sure, I'm making sure that he built the, the boathouse to the plans that he submitted, okay? That's, that's a loaded question. That's what I, I asked you previously. With regards to the structure of how you built the boathouse, because you were approved, is there a way that you could currently, without removing steel, could you remove three feet from the sidewalls?
I mean, anything's possible. And believe me, I've put a lot of thought and effort into some systematic way to, to do that. It would be very complicated.
Is it sitting on steel?
It's sitting on--
According to the plans, it's sitting on steel.
Sitting on steel. There's a treated sillboard bolted to the steel. The sheeting, which is three-quarter OSB sheeting, drops down, passes steel and the sealboard. It is nailed effectively all the way around with 16 sinkers. I personally think I pounded all those nails myself. Hurricane clips are on the trusses. Um, yes, anything's possible. The physicality and the, the reality of actually doing that may sort of the point of, it's almost start the whole entire structure down and borderline start from scratch all over again. There's just, there's not a simple way to do it. If there was, like I say, I've, I've thought about it. I've, you know, this has been going on a long time. So there's been a lot of thought and a lot of things I've thought and considered to maybe do something different and it would, it would be difficult. It would, it would be time-consuming and costly.
So besides the cost, because we can't really look at cost of how we make any of our decisions, right?
Yes.
So I'm coming up with something to help everybody, you know what I mean? You know, in a sense. What if, what if we put windows on the bottom?
I mean, that would be easier than trying to cut apart and mutilate the entire structure. You know, also, if we were to just try and shorten, shorten the knee walls and drop it down, well, now we lost three-foot overall height inside the structure, which really the height is definitely necessary for his--
I guess everyone's not really complaining about the height.
They're not.
You know what I mean?
So--
I get the boat. I couldn't care less if it has three motors or 20 motors.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
So--
That doesn't bother me.
To establish the, maintain the height inside the structure to eliminate the knee walls, basically, I would have to, the knee walls would have to be cut down. The steel structure would have to be raised up another three feet to--
He's not asking you to eliminate, Brett. I think what he asked you is--
Could you put three-foot windows in there?
How about like a plexiglass or something that is see-through? Like a see-through wall? You know how you see some people have now balconies and there's glass? I don't, I mean, I know you can't use glass, but what if there's some type of material, like a bulletproof glass-type looking, you know, something that you can see through?
Sure, sure.
An option. Just, just--
Yeah, I mean, I mean--
Start an outfit.
Sure, sure. I mean, anything's possible, some sort of window. Yeah, you know, kind of, kind of the way it's built was purposely built so that, you know, the actual studded wall sits on top of the steel. We drop the OSB down so it goes--
Covers the steel.
Covers the steel--
Right.
So we can effectively put trim material and fasten steel, you know, on that OSB to, to cover the steel and make it all look more uniform and together.
So you, you've gone over every option in your census?
I've, I've thought about it a lot and they're just, to, to modify or seriously manipulate what's there, I think gets, gets in too close to a borderline rebuild or almost a, almost a start over in some aspects.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
You guys cannot go off of how big the boat is or any of that.
Yeah.
Big the boat is. I have a lot of water.
Can I, so what was--
I'm pretty impressed that he put it, you know, changed it and moved his dock over. I feel, I feel for Gary, the neighbor, but I look at it like this. Shoot, half of your boathouse is on his property, that you get all that view and--
It shouldn't matter in your decision.
I, but it does in my decisions. So when you decide if you wanted to put six-foot or three-foot side on your boathouse, you would, one, have to move it over, put it on your property, and then you could do it, right? But I thought the three-foot or the, with the, the view, you're just guarding or blocking trees. I don't see any additional--
You mean up the river?
Yeah, the river.
We might see the boats on, on the river. Including the freighters.
The boats--
You can, Gary, right straight out your view, right? You can see all that, correct? And you can see that 100% underneath his boathouse too, right?
It's your ordinance. Your ordinance says three-foot sidewalls.
Right.
You guys need to comply with your ordinance as written.
There's a zoning board for a reason, sir.
And why, why did he come to you beforehand?
You know, when you, when you did your opening comments that you were all congratulating Gary for making a mistake and admitting up to his mistake and then now you're, you're just saying this right now. That's all I'm getting at. He, he made a mistake.
I understand that. I'm glad he admitted it.
But had they known he made a mistake, they would have been here prior.
Correct.
Two rocks don't make a right.
They didn't do anything wrong, though.
He submitted plans for a non-conforming boathouse.
They were granted--
That was a wrong--
Gary, I have some questions.
Sure.
Our building inspector. Yeah.
Too many years.
I was just wondering if you looked at the sidewalls on the property and looked at some solution of maybe shortening them three feet? Is it possible?
Well, yes. I, I think that Brett has the equipment to be able to grab that whole top structure and be able to pick it up and cut it down and set it back down. At a cost, yes, but I know he has the equipment to be able to do that. But, you know-- Gary, I don't think you can pick that whole structure up the way it's built right now and with any equipment that is on a barge. Yeah, it's, it's a moving water situation. It's, it's difficult. And to his point, yeah, it might be a, a tear-down in order to make that happen. So, you know, I did my work on hard ground, so water I know is a different animal.
Right.
So if these guys came in front of us--
It's an unfortunate situation and obviously mistakes get made. And if this was to come in front of me, I would have never approved it, ever. Not six feet. But now here we are. I mean, it is a mistake and it is--
Why wouldn't you approve it?
I wouldn't have approved the six-foot.
Why?
I mean, three-foot is what our ordinance says.
You just let a boathouse on Calum go.
Not, it's not a different situation. This is actually--
100%?
On the river.
There are other boathouses that are totally enclosed.
Those are already grandfathered in.
There's no such thing as grandfather-- There's no such thing as grandfathering.
Well, they've been way before.
100%, they were done before and maybe done before new ordinances.
They said they were four foot too. They were four foot, not six too.
I don't know when the open walls became three feet. I don't know exactly when that was, you know. My neighbor just put a whole boathouse in, two, a full thing on the channel. My view was straight out. Wasn't through his boathouse. I've lived in the water my whole life, so.
I can't see through his boathouse.
Looked through boathouses all the time.
Let's let them all come in and we'll start building boathouses.
They can't build boathouses, but they do.
Can I ask for clarification? So Jeanette Steele? I know, I know. But she's on the other side of that, Gary?
That's me.
Who? Sorry.
I own that house with my mother.
Okay, so you, Jeffrey Burdo is sandwiched between you two, correct?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
I wouldn't allow them to hike at this point, you know.
Build a boathouse behind your house?
No. There are none.
You can.
No, you can't. There's none.
But you can.
So Brett, I have a question. So the biggest, the biggest situation that you would have right now is it's impossible to take those walls down to three feet?
Well, I mean, obviously nothing's.
I mean, not possible. You know what I'm saying?
It's a huge monetary.
It would be very involved unless I, we've nailed it very well. I'd have to go through all the nails out, cut it apart, rip it apart. It would just be very, very difficult. But honestly, you know, I thought about it. If it was real simple and we could just hack away and drop it down, you know, that would be such a big deal. If we do drop all the structure, then now we're back to losing the height inside of the structure. The bottom part of the trusses would also drop down three feet at that point.
So those sidewalls are not just there for protection. It's actually part of the structure and it's holding it all together and.
Sure, sure.
How are we?
It's like what I had without that is what Gary said. So it's not really holding the hoist together is what they're saying, but it's.
But it's holding the wall. This piece of steel is holding that wall.
Yeah, but it's not all steel, right? No, you're saying this is steel?
No, this piece of steel that's welded to the steel I-beams that you, or steel pilings that you saw right here.
But you can't open it up like, make it like a windowy type and keep the sides that are holding it up?
Right.
So you couldn't like take it, open it up a little bit, but keep the sides that are already there and holding it up? The structure itself? You couldn't like open it up a little bit?
We're telling this for our neighbors.
No, not really.
I guess anything is possible.
But it's costly.
It would still have to have, still have some structure in there. It would be completely open. It would be completely open structure. We'd have to have some studs to continue to support the wall. Those need to be trimmed out. The beam is still there. Let's say we built the walls down to cover up the beam and sillboard to make a one wall. That beam would still be there. So effectively, you know, you'd have an opening still with the steel.
What about on the front? What about on the front?
At the gable lines?
Yeah, to see through.
To do something as far as the see-through portion, yes, it would be much easier to do something on the gable lines versus trying to do it on those sides.
Could you put an arch or something to, and then even if you had the steel beam that the wall's sitting on, if you put an open arch somewhat to where maybe you put a window in or put a screen in to stop bird or whatever, just so you could see through both gable ends. Would that help?
That would be, I mean, probably more logical if we were doing the sidewall that , you know.
Gary?
They have to see the plans, but yeah, something, anything to give us.
Well, you're the only one that's complaining about seeing through. Where is that? And you live down, right?
I'm the one looking at the side of the thing. I just wonder, I'm sitting here listening. Brett's a great guy. I'm sitting here wondering, I could go and get a goddamn saw and go take.
Yeah, but there's a steel beam that's still sitting down there.
There's one, oh, hey, a steel beam. Leave this structure there, but it clears the view. I don't know why you have to have.
You still have the steel beam there. It's still at six foot.
How big is the steel beam?
Eight inches.
You got eight inches across.
Eight inches.
Okay. Versus three foot. Why can't you weld it? Extensions all around the boathouse and cut the thing and put it back down? Keep the height.
Because I think that you would be then.
It's just the sides need to go up three feet, right? But he can't because there's a steel beam there.
No, leave the steel beam.
Leave the steel beam.
But it's still at six foot. It's still there. It's still a visual thing.
But the wood wouldn't be there.
They don't want the wood.
It's the wood is the problem. The wood is.
So that's why I said if we put a window there, if you put windows every so often, because you would have to header it off. Actually, you wouldn't have to header it off. You could put just windows in and incur an expense for windows. Three foot windows. You can see through it. The steel beam stays.
Can I approach?
Who's talking? Yes, come on up there, please.
So for discussion purposes, to compromise, this is the.
The gable line, yeah.
So you're saying put some kind of glass, plexiglass at this end and at the water end where the boat comes in?
That helps out one person.
Right.
But it doesn't help out the side.
That beam's in place.
Correct.
And all these studs, so to speak, in place.
Correct.
Okay, I see.
That helps keep the wall together.
Correct.
And it's also tied midway for a structural component to hold it, to give it integrity because it's along the water. And if you know anything about when it's blowing.
We all live there.
Right. When you're in close proximity to open land and water, you have to have structural integrity to hold a building in place.
Can I see that?
Sure.
So this is what I'm trying to say. I'm sorry. So if you had this open space is what everybody's saying and they could see through there, they would be fine with it because this is six feet and this is three feet. I know what you're saying here, but why can't you put a thick piece of like some sort of plexiglass or something in there to keep the integrity of the.
Because the integrity is through these studs that come down to this steel beam.
Are holding up the.
That's sitting on this sill plate that's holding everything in place.
Right. The roof in place. You can see it.
It's easy for us to say that, but an engineer would have to do that.
I mean, if you don't ask, then.
Can I say that, please?
There's no reason to say it here.
Right, that's why I came up to.
Oh, so this is, yeah. So that's the steel right there, right? That's the steel?
That's the steel beam. These are steel legs.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
And then everything's tied together.
To the roof, right.
To the roof so that you have strength when the wind blows.
Well, it's holding up. It has to be, what is it, 12 inches on center or something like that?
Generally like, probably the studs are 16 inches on center?
I think it's 16 inches.
Two, two foot. So between these studs.
Are two foot.
Have two foot on center.
Yeah.
So the chairman was referencing some type of plexiglass at that.
Well, if you opened it up so that it didn't look so six foot, if you were to be able to. It doesn't help the side view. You're right. It does not help the side view at all. I was just trying to help Gary with his front view to see through.
Right.
But you can't see through it when the boat's there anyways. Just like, just like he can't see through his when his boat's in there. Just like the neighbor can't see down when all the boats are in there.
Right, because this was Exhibit A in the supplement that I submitted that shows Jeff's boat and his boathouse. And then this is Gary to the left.
Correct.
His boat facility and his boat.
Correct.
So your view, no matter what, when there's a boat in any of those facilities, whether it's there on the South Channel or on Colony, it's somewhat obstructed by the boat in the facility.
Gary, is there any, you know how we have the, if it's two foot off the property line, does it do anything with off the property line here for the height? Two feet off, you get additional foot. I mean, is that stretching? Like, is that land stuff? Are we just gonna?
Perion, it's kind of weird out there. But I think we got it at the two and a half on the height is where we needed to be on that. The big issue, like you already know, is the height's not the issue here. No one's in opposition to that. It's the knee wall height is what's at issue. And even being off the property line to get that 3.24 to come into play doesn't change that knee wall height.
No, but it would change the height.
Yeah, but it doesn't come into play.
What if, what if you put longer overhangs on, Brett? To shorten it up?
I thought about it. I guess it would change.
What's the roof? What's the material?
Everything's holebar material. It's holebar sheeting.
So is that all sitting on the job site? It's already cut to size?
All due as purchased, as I had a building for my first year. Originally the patient side, it was going to be one piece, holebar metal, six inch, one foot.
So there's no way we can stretch the steel?
Not that portion of it.
I get it. I'm just saying. I'm just saying if you put like a two foot overhang on it, it would only be a five foot knee wall versus a six foot knee wall.
Sure.
Right? But we can't because you already pre-ordered the material.
It would change the roof steel. It would change the roof steel and it would change, just change trimming out that.
Yeah, I mean, if you already have the steel package there, yes, all that would have to change.
Can I come back up?
Yep. What do you got, Boris?
And this is a question I asked Brett. See, so on the sidewalls, there's the studs.
Yep.
The studs are in this wall too.
Correct.
Same configuration case.
Correct, yep.
You didn't know that.
No, I did not know that. So thank you for pointing out.
If you can't cut an arc.
It's your studs.
It's the same thing.
It's the same. So what you see here is on all four walls. The side here, the side
Thank you for pointing that out.
You know, on the riverside.
Appreciate it.
Do you still collect? It's not like easy is cutting it back. It's not as easy to just cut it back. It's all literally part of the structure.
Well, that all is structure. All those walls, all of it is holding up all those trusses.
So what's, if he was to cut out the board, you're still going to see all the structure holding it up. It's all, it can't be, if you just cut out the particle board, you're still going to see all the structure that's holding the roof up. It would make.
It's like a puzzle.
No.
Sure.
Different. It's just not gonna, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I gotta repeat myself. Take the three foot off the bottom, because right now it's overbearing with a six foot spur down there. I think if you cut it down to three foot, it would look nice and leave the beam in place and nobody would be, I know I wouldn't have.
So here's.
Brett, he needs that height too.
Well, no, the height is fine. I'm not going to.
I know, but if you cut three feet off of it, the walls are on top of the steel. You have the steel on the top too. So the walls that are sitting on top of the steel, if you cut them down three feet, your whole structure height would come down three feet.
No, but we have to cut the wall is what you're saying.
The particle board.
Correct.
The particle board.
Right. We understand that.
So if you were to see what I'm seeing.
Can't do that.
You can't cut the particle board?
You can, but you know. It's attached. It's part of the structure itself.
Show him, show him. So he sees it.
You guys, you can't. Look at me. If you cut three feet off, that means.
He's not saying to cut that off.
I say yes.
He just wants the particle board removed. Yeah, just the particle board. He's not getting it. There's structure holding it up.
You can't just get rid of the, you can't get rid of the OSB. Because then just the studs would be showing.
Listen, I've been an engineer for 50 years. I don't accept that. It just sounds like we're just complicating the situation there. I mean, I don't need to say anymore.
I'm just trying to answer you.
I'm just saying is I would sit there and say, take the three feet off the bottom, make everybody happy and let's get out of there.
But then you'd lower the height of the building.
No, I don't lower the height of the building. I'm talking to spur. You don't need a six foot spur. Make it a.
It's sitting on top of the steel.
It's not sitting on the steel.
It's right there in the plant.
I'm looking right at it, sir.
No. Particle board is just the wall around the steel, right Brett?
No.
The particle board is getting part of the.
I've been building for 35 years. I see it right here.
It's holding.
Already, all my questions.
Gary, you should probably take a look at that too, just so you can see what we're talking about.
All right. Brett, windows. It's a cheaper cost than tearing the whole thing down.
That would be a cheaper cost than tearing it down, yes.
I mean, you're not going to get.
But he's going to end up with spiders and all kinds of shit. It's going to look like,
It's going to look the exact same as it looks now, but you'll be able to see through it.
The point is, is that it was meant to be closed in with metal on the outside, as well as closed in with metal on the inside, on the inside of walls, on the ceiling to prevent the bugs, the birds, the spiders, the mess. Cut a bunch of the wall out. Somehow the beams need to be trimmed out. Now we just created a ledge for bird mess, spider mess. Be very difficult to trim it out. Windows.
All right.
You're telling me he can't cut, right here, this is it, right here?
Yep.
Take the bottom three foot out, leave that section, the three foot section.
Say it again. I see it? Yep?
Leave, take this part off and just leave the top.
Then what are you going to do with that part?
What, the steel here?
No, this part down here that you tick off.
Get rid of it. I mean, that's what's causing the overbearing look of the thing.
Just the OSB?
Right, but then all, the whole roof would come down.
No. Why does it come down? This is, just leave.
What do you mean?
We got a three foot spur on it. That's all. According to.
It's six foot.
No, right now it's six. I'm saying take the bottom three off and leave the top.
So the whole roof would come down three feet?
Why would the roof come down?
Because you're taking away three feet, sir.
I'm not doing anything. I'm not changing.
Sir, 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 listen. That's the whole wall. You take three feet. What's that going to do? Just going to float?
I'm just talking, take the particle board off.
Okay, so you want to see all the wood?
So you're going to see all the studs in there?
The studs, they, the studs out too. They don't have to.
Then what's going to hold the roof up? No, look, I want. No, look, I want you to understand it.
I see what you're saying.
It is going to hold the roof.
Look, see.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's holding the roof up, the studs.
I'm just trying to explain that it's not that easy. The roof would come down.
I would like that to be the answer to.
Then it was a pathetic design again.
Right.
You said you would have denied it if it would have come to you.
Yeah, but it's.
It's his responsibility.
Whatever design that is, it has a pathetic design.
So you could see the conundrum we're in.
Yeah. I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
That's why I tried to say windows on that, to take up that three feet.
I would never have thought somebody would have designed.
Yeah. So you can't.
That's why, that's why all my questions I asked a couple different ways, so my structural mind's trying to come up with.
For you guys to figure out. It's his problem.
It's not his problem.
He submitted a non-conforming design.
And it was approved.
Yeah.
We're entitled to seek the variance.
Right. Well, everyone's entitled to a variance.
Well, he was telling us that you couldn't.
No, anybody can come for variance in front of us, so.
Before the project starts?
If it wasn't approved.
You are correct.
Why didn't he, why did that happen?
He didn't know he needed a variance.
Correct.
It was approved, so he didn't think he needed a variance.
He didn't read the ordinance before spending all this money?
I don't know.
Sir, I can't answer that right now. I mean, we're right now, we're just trying to compromise and apparently it's not working.
It's not your job to figure it out.
Right. He needs to figure it out.
It's, yeah.
Help us out here.
As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that the township becomes liable.
Right.
For what?
For approval.
No varying of decision.
It is a.
It will appeal.
It's not that it's going to cause an issue on a bunch of homeowners now coming, because this is an unfortunate circumstance. It's not that we're going to allow all of these changes because they're going to say, oh, he did it. Well, that was an unfortunate circumstance. It has nothing to do with any future boathouses.
I don't think any one of you would want that boathouse in front of your house.
I have a boathouse in front of my house, and it is completely enclosed, and it has a roof that you can walk on and barbecue on and anything else you want to do. And I honestly don't love it, but it's my neighbor's, so I'm just neighborly and it was there. And not that that matters here either way, but they're in a situation as well that you don't want to see, and maybe you don't think they want to see your situation, but they've already been approved. So the work had to stop. They've paid for all the material. They've paid the contractor. They, for all purposes, thought they were getting this boathouse done, correct?
That really has nothing to do with it.
Well, sure it does. Wouldn't you? What if you were building a home? What if you were building something?
And it was approved.
I build it conforming.
You thought you were, and then all of a sudden someone said you weren't.
He didn't read the ordinance first.
Maybe he missed it. I don't know. He's a human. Are you? I am.
Well, the builder inspector missed it.
Exactly.
Hang on, you're going to put your teeth before you do this.
They get a stop order.
They are. Just as limited as a neighbor is too.
Yeah.
I totally agree. I'm just saying, you know, you got two people met.
I understand that. That's what I'm trying to explain. One or the other.
There's no fix.
No, because no one's happy.
So I guess, note this. This came in front of you, would you allow this?
I would allow the six foot spur. Right.
So if you.
Yeah, I would have.
If you deny that, right? I don't know about that. I don't know how that works. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not my position.
Brett, how far is the water down right now?
Um, last I looked, water's at five seventy-four and a half or something like that, so I don't know if I lost the view. What's this, this summer, ten inches?
What was the highest?
This summer?
Like the highest water that we've ever had since, like, two years ago, whatever, three years ago?
Highest tsunami was five seventy-seven, somewhere between five seventy-seven and five seventy-eight, I had to think.
What's the lowest?
I think the lowest is, um, five seven, I don't see it, three, I think.
Five feet?
Seems like more.
We're still, even like, most of summer, most of summer, we're like five seventy-five.
So I get the height, I get the T-tops. I get the height out of the water, because when it's high water, you need, you need water underneath the boat so the waves don't hit your boat and lift you off the hoist.
Yeah, that banks the boat, lifts the waves, or head down the bottom, yes.
Low water, you can still get out regardless.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, high water is usually a typically bigger problem than low water is for lifting a boat, especially obviously it's not a channel. You know, more traffic, greater surge.
I mean. Teach me, I don't see the problem with the six foot walls right now for the structure, how it's designed. If it came in, I would say, okay, I see why you needed to get the height. He could have obviously put the steel higher.
They may have to do higher steel.
Correct.
And when that's what we expect.
Given more questions? Because obviously, we can't just tell them to cut down the three feet.
Right. It will compromise the structure. It's, if answered bots, because if we did, we would be just telling them to cut down three. Whole thing, yeah. It's just the, you know, the fascia.
But I'm just saying.
Well, I hear that permit was granted mistakenly. The structure was completely structured, can't change it, can't change the instruction.
Or the integrity of the building. So go ahead.
I think it left goes. It was issued before permit. It is a totally unique situation.
Right, yeah.
It isn't self-created because it was.
Right, it was approved, yeah.
Substantive circumstances, not getting anything different than in those boathouses or any other boathouses. Both, both things you can, you know, the height and then the knee walls, two separate.
Motion?
Yeah. Just Kansas as written.
No, 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 you got to go through all of it.
You just.
You just.
Correct. Sherry, what's your thought?
I'm not part of it.
Both.
Well, she thought the same as me.
Knee wall.
I don't want that. We can tie it down now, but we can tie it down with our feet. So, five three feet. They can just have to secure it like they would with this.
No, they would have to change the.
You're taking the whole structure down.
They have to lift the roof up.
And then they would have to raise the steel line.
You mean, so look at the, all the supporting wood?
Yeah, and just structurally tie it in a different manner.
You can't do that, no.
If it was built originally at three feet, you'd have to structurally tie it.
That steel would have been up higher.
Right. Right now, right now it's a six foot and then a steel. That's why I said, is there something with a point in between?
They bring another piece of steel to make it shorter or no? That doesn't, can't do that.
Oh, you mean to weld it, weld one piece of steel?
Weld steel.
How are you going to hold the structure in the meantime?
Lift off from the.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Off the structure.
And they have everything tied together. It's a puzzle.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it should hold together if they lift it.
You're not lifting fifty-two feet or.
Yeah.
On the water.
Wood, which is.
It's their brain.
You're not lifting fifty-two feet.
Yeah.
It's already up. It's already built. It's already built.
It was a joke.
Per print.
I know, it's not fun, but yeah.
I get it. Oh. Literally, yeah, float it, but.
Finger lighter in the water.
Okay, well.
So you're. Now you're, you're back in the decision. On the state for the inspector. Back in the homeowner that did it all, one hundred percent legal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the thing. And I wouldn't, I don't blame her because I don't know how to say it. I mean, if I had a normal like this, I would have called for our lawyer.
Yeah. Can we table it or no?
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
You know, I asked my neighbor for plans before the roof went up. I wasn't supplied those plans. I mean, we could have, this could have been a burden.
Did you get a notification that he was building a boathouse through Eagle?
Only through Eagle.
At that time, did you acquire any information for that?
It actually was bigger.
That's the time you could have stopped anything right there. Right? Did you though? Did you?
Oh, it was a different plan, set of plans.
Yeah, but it was three foot bigger, taller.
We'd still like to see in the plans ahead of time.
But that's not typical for a neighbor to okay the plan or not. You had your chance to say something against Eagle.
Against Eagle. Eagle doesn't write the ordinance for how tall the boathouse can be, or how.
You don't have a say regardless to what Gary's decision would be. You would have, with Eagle, if you would have had a question to Eagle. But you didn't then, right?
I think I did call them.
And they didn't call you back?
I think I spoke to somebody about it, but.
Gotcha.
They deferred to the local ordinance.
That's not, uh.
It's your ordinance on the.
Yeah, but Eagle is totally separate than our ordinances. Totally, you know what I mean? Their guidelines are different. Eagle, they'd let you build a whole boathouse with sides.
Yeah.
That's why your ordinance has been written.
But I've seen full boathouses being built.
Would that, would a full boathouse been approved for that? You've already said that. Had you seen the plans before, had he come before you, the board, before, the variance wouldn't have been approved.
Well, that's not grounds to deny this variance. What would have happened, what didn't happen?
It's either conforming or non-conforming. It's not conforming.
Well, if it's non-conforming, that's why people are coming for an CBA. That's why we're here.
It's unfortunate, it's just after the fact. I get it. I totally get it.
As you can see, it's not an easy decision for us to make, so.
Let's make it right.
We're going to make it right for whomever we can. We're just trying to back and forth with each other.
What's that? Good. Probably should, no?
I mean, we probably said too much.
So, this is, they're going to be. Gary, when did you submit this?
Oh, Gary who?
Lawyer Gary.
Submit, oh, I can't see the, so what?
Your whole pamphlet.
Oh, when did I submit the?
October eighth, is that your date? That's your letter.
I submitted it by email October eighth, twenty twenty-five at four thirty-seven, because I had talked to.
Oh, it was at four thirty-eight.
What's that?
Okay.
Oh, well, my email said.
Thank you.
So you're talking about this?
Yeah.
Yes. So this is the date that you submitted it. That's what I'm getting at.
But you now to the township.
All this paperwork.
I sent it on October eighth.
Thank you.
After I come to the township offices, take some documents, talk to Olivia, and then I said, do you want hard copies or can I just email it? And I emailed the door, and she acknowledged and called me that she got it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Did you guys read this? That's what I'm getting at. That's why I asked the date. Did anyone read this off their phone? You didn't see it, or?
I don't, no, I didn't have a look at it.
Monica, when did you get hired in, or sworn in?
When is, was, no, no.
Not, let's say sworn in, but when did.
Two, three weeks ago.
Did you see this?
It came through an email, I thought, didn't it? Is it recently?
Yeah, that's on the list.
Yeah, because I, yes, because I saw these exhibits and I was like, where are these exhibits stacked at?
Right, we, that's, I'm getting it. Sherry, did you see this? Did you see it in your email?
I didn't. Yeah, because I noticed all these exhibits and I said, where are all these exhibits at? Only E just have.
Totally agree.
Seeing that they agree to something.
Gary. Brett.
Builder Gary.
You guys got anything?
How's it going?
Anything that would help the situation?
Sorry?
Anything that would help that situation?
Well, it's a try-in, you know?
Alright, so what I'm gonna recommend, and I'm gonna say, it's not gonna make anybody happy, but I'm gonna say, let's postpone this decision until I speak to the, our lawyer for the township, regardless of how we're gonna make this decision. So our verbiage is correct. It doesn't matter. We're gonna make somebody mad, we're gonna make somebody happy. Regardless, both people are gonna be mad. So I say we postpone until I talk to our lawyer and see how she wants to defend this case. I don't know what our decision is. We didn't vote. But in the same token, if we vote for or against, I wanna make sure that she's definitely aware of the situation.
It's properly documented.
I can't do anything about it. I'm not gonna make you happy. I know you're not gonna be happy. Sorry, Brad, I can't, you know what I mean? Gary, you, you know what I mean? If we say one thing, we're wrong. If we say the other, we're wrong. But in the same token, you're right. Two wrongs don't make a right. But we are gonna make a decision. I just wanna make sure it's through our lawyer. She can help defend any of our decisions that we make with the verbiage that we have to put down on it. Because this is a unique, I've never had to deal with this to where this was. You know, out of respect for Gary, our billing official, I think we owe it to him to have legal defense for a decision that he, you know, that he made. For us, I, I'm not trying to make it right, but the structure's already there and something's, something's gotta be done. So I say we defer it. Give me, I, I don't even know how the next procedure goes right now. When, when we can come up for another meeting, if we can just hold a special meeting, that would be up to the lawyer to decide. You will obviously be notified, everybody here, every letter would be notified the next meeting. I don't know if it's gonna be to the next one or if I can meet. And, and do some special meeting because I know they want their structure completed, one way or the other. But right now, I think that's in the best interest for all of us to, I didn't know it was gonna be like this, so I would have had our lawyer present. But it comes at a, at a cost and, and it seems like it's gonna be inevitable, so I want her to be present.
Yes.
Can I ask a couple procedural questions?
Yes.
Is your attorney Chris Anderson?
Yes.
And then, if you postpone it to your next meeting, when is that?
Well, we're saying maybe we'll do.
Oh, I know, I mean, what would be your next regular?
Um, it would be the nineteenth of November.
Yep.
Your, your boat's already out of the water, right?
Yes.
I think you already stored it, right?
Yeah, boat's out of the water, but you know, obviously the structure's unprotected.
The metal's there.
Well, it's not the metal, it's, it's the wood, you know, it's, it's, there's no ice clusters put in. If we get ice and this thing doesn't get resolved, um, you know, and we have, you know, potential damage and more damage to the structure.
Yeah, give, give me, I will, I will do what I have to do tomorrow and, and make contact and see what we can do to expedite this decision in writing. If it's a special meeting or if it is, you know, I don't want it to be the November fifteenth, I, I know that. But I don't know if I have the power to hold a special meeting for, for this. I don't, I don't think I do, so.
Yeah, if it's a special meeting, you can have Chris call me. Her number's four six nine thirty-eight hundred. I have a lot of cases with her, so.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
So that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I think in all honesty, I, I feel more comfortable if we had our lawyer present too. So, alright? So with that said, this case is not closed, but.
Pending, adjourned.
Pending, this one. And everyone will be notified when, when it is. It'll be up on the website, I'm sure. And then obviously all parties involved will be notified, okay? I will talk to her tomorrow as she answers my phone call. I will talk to Gary, talk to Olivia, and we'll get, get what I need to do for her to, to be present, basically, to help us out.
Thank you.
It's out of my, my wheelhouse on this one. I can't think of the verbiage that I wanna put down, so. I, I can't think of it. Alright, so that's over with. So we're gonna end that case for now. Alright, sorry about that. Alright, unfinished business. We're gonna move on. Nothing?
No.
Report to, report from finding commission?
Report. There was not another meeting since our last ZBA.
Um, any other matters reviewed? So when, um.
Oh, I do wanna let you know, um, I went to the board meeting last night. So you guys might be interested to know that they did approve the. No. They did approve the smaller, um, mobile home park. Oh, the ten, ten slot or? No, yeah, well, they just did.
Over on the island?
No, they approved the smaller, like allowing six, no, they didn't approve that. They changed the ordinance regarding mobile home parks. They did change the ordinance regarding mobile home parks, so.
Perfect.
And the lighting. Did you guys, were you guys part of that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I get it all confused.
Thank you, thank you. Public comments? Honor?
Anybody?
I'm closing it. Close. Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Meeting over.